Well, at six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order if Phil can lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, God, for another day, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings of life. God, I just pray, Lord, that you would intercede in this meeting with us tonight and just help us to make the best decisions we can on behalf of the city, the city that we love so much, Lord. Now, I pray that we would all come together in making those decisions. Now go with us, Lord, lead, guide, and direct us. Forgive us for our sins and shortcomings. These many favors and blessings I ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Everyone will join us with a pledge of the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is to consider the agenda for adoption. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Please vote. Carries five oh. Next is to consider adopting the following meeting minutes. Item A, the regular meeting of April 19th, 2022.
Motion approved.
Please vote. Carries five oh. Item B, executive session meeting, April 19th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Please vote. Carries five oh. Next, under acknowledgements and resolutions, first, we have a proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerks Week, of which we have the best in the state, Mr. Jeff Honi. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and is the oldest among public servants, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas professional municipal clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas they continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments in service of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I Troy Brumbelow, Mayor of the City of Cummins, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through the 7th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our city clerk, Jeff Honi, and his staff for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the City of Cummins. Will everyone join in giving us a hand for Jeff Honi over here? You gotta come on up. You're the only guy that can take this. We appreciate you very much. You gotta get front of the camera. Thank you, Jim. I really appreciate you. Next, we have one for National Travel and Tourism Week. Whereas the travel and tourism industry is vital to the City of Cummins and Forsyth County as a driver of economic development and prosperity, and whereas the local hospitality and travel industry represent both businesses small and large, which makes up the fabric of our community memorable to those who visit for leisure, corporate, sporting, specialty, and film travel. And whereas in the year 2020, despite the economic downturns during the coronavirus pandemic, the industry generated 139.7 million in visitor spending, 9.1 million in state and local tax revenues, and provided residents $118.20 state and local tax savings per household. Whereas in the year 2021, the industry generated over 17.6 million in hotel revenues, producing over 882,000 in local hotel motel tax revenue with an increase of 20% hotel occupancy over the prior year. And whereas visitors enjoy our community for its tourism assets, including Shawnee Mountain, Lake Lanier, Forsyth and Cumming Parks and Rec, Cumming Fairgrounds, sporting tournaments, fishing opportunities, breweries, distilleries, and wineries, the Big Creek Greenway, exceptional food and beverage options, agro tourism products, conference venues, shopping areas such as the Collection, Vickery, Halcyon, and the future Cumming City Center. And whereas the City of Cummins and Forsyth County, strong growth continues to be an attractor for new hotels, attractions, restaurants, and sporting assets. Now therefore, I Troy Brumbelow, Mayor of the City of Cummins, do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 7th, 2022 as National Travel and Tourism Week and urge the citizens of Cummins to join me in this special observance. So we've got somebody here from the chamber. So next, under Old Business There Is None, New Business Administration, item one, the 2021 Audit Report from the Ruston Group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having Ruston back to perform the 2021 Audit. Things went very smoothly during the audit process. I got a few items you should have there in front of you. You should have a presentation. It's bound like this. This is where I'll spend 95% of my time unless you have specific questions. Should have two letters, one of which is a management letter that I will not be discussing unless you have specific questions on it. The other says significant audit matters at the top are underlying there. I'll briefly run through that. And then, of course, you've got the actual annual financial report bound for it as well, which I pulled some numbers out of to discuss tonight, but I'm also happy to answer any specific questions you have on the report as well. Before I get started with my quick presentation here, I wanted to first let you all know, as I mentioned to start, the audit did go very smoothly. We've actually been complete with the audit for probably three or four weeks at least at this point now. So that's just a testament to the folks you have. Good time to have a proclamation there for the City Clerks Week. The city clerk did a great job, all the folks in finance, all of your department heads, and all the employees for that matter. I mean, we asked a lot of a lot of different folks throughout the city, and they all did it with a smile. So even though, again, we're bothering them a lot during the process. So we're appreciative of that. We'll express that before we get started on the numbers. So if you want to flip along with me here with the presentation, our first slide, we talk about our audit opinion. So our independent audits report is found on pages one through three of the bound audit report or annual financial report. You will note, if you look at that letter, that letter did change this year. There were some changes due to the auditing standards, not accounting standards, but our actual auditing standards, some new statements on auditing standards, SaaS's as we call them, changed the letter. Didn't really change anything in regard to like opinion. It just actually moved the opinion up as the very first thing of the report, as that is technically the most important piece of the report is the opinion. But it did make the letter get a little long, talks a little bit about some of our responsibilities, some of your responsibilities, or these financial statements, of course, are the responsibility of the City of Cummings management. Our responsibility as your auditor is to opine upon, give an opinion on those financial statements, that they are not materially misstated, whether due to fraud or error. I am pleased to present that for 2021, we do have an unmodified or clean opinion on the financials. Nothing came to our attention during the audit that would prohibit us from issuing an unmodified opinion. All right, moving on to the next slide. I always call your attention to two statements in this entire 100-page report. It might be quite a 180-page report here. There are only two statements in this entire report that bring all activities of the city together in one on the full accrual basis of accounting. So I know you all spent a lot of time throughout the year looking at your general fund, looking at your water fund, maybe talking about SPOLOST projects. These particular statements, these two pull all of those funds together in one on the full accrual basis of accounting. You all are likely aware, when you're looking at your general fund throughout the year, that's on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is somewhat similar to cash basis. These statements here are on the full accrual basis of accounting. So that's where you get your capital assets. In this case, there is no debt for the city currently, but that's where you would have your capital assets and such reported. So those two statements are the statement of net position, which is like a balance sheet. It's found on pages 15 and 16. And the statement of activities, which is going to be similar to an income statement, is found on pages 17. A few numbers from those statements. Looking at net position, net position being the equity of the city remaining there at year end, you see have a three-year comparison here for you. For 2021, you'll see there net investment in capital assets is going to be your land, buildings, equipment, less depreciation on those assets. In this case, there is no debt on these assets. So it would just be the assets in this case, 273,649,424. You see this substantial increase in the prior year, which you all expect with the large city center project that's taking place. As you'll see, it's effect throughout these financials. Restricted net position, 365,252. That's going to be any outside restrictions that are placed on funds that you have not yet expended at year end. SPOLOST would be a good example of that. Any SPOLOST money you're holding that had not yet been expended at year end would be in this classification. And lastly, unrestricted net position, 21,710,267 for total net position, 295,724,943. So as you'll see there, increase in net position for the year, 15,575,389. While the categories there changed, total net position did increase by $15 million. You can see here.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Under Development Authority of Cummins, why is it in the red? At some 16.
You're talking about the unrestricted net position?
Just, I don't know what it is. It just says.
You're talking about 20,000. 20,539 credit balance? That's a deficit net position there. That's the residual equity of the Development Authority. Now, that is largely due to, in this case, the payable to the primary government is greater than the receivable from the city of, I mean, from the university of things.
Does that make sense to me? No.
The assets are less than the liabilities at year end. Does that follow that a little plus what I'm saying there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the assets there are less than the liabilities. So that, the accounting equation is assets less liabilities equals net position. And so in this case, the net position is deficit because your liabilities exceeded your assets in that particular instance. Good question. Now, that is a component unit of the city. I should make that clear, too. That's, of course, not reported. These numbers I'm talking through here, these net position numbers I'm talking through here, do not include that entity. That is a component unit. But you will see the categories changed there in your net position largely due to, again, the investment in the city center. It's the largest change in the categories there. All right, the next slide, general fund. So let's talk through the general fund again. Of course, that's the chief operating fund of the city. And you all spend a lot of time throughout the year looking at the general fund. For the year, revenues increased 3,993,152, or about 31%. Few items contributed to that increase. Your local option sales tax increased 894,986. We're seeing an increase in sales tax across the state. Good news on that front. Revenue as far as from your charges for services for your recreation, aquatic center and fairgrounds, those obviously increased substantially, 2,252,818. Those were down substantially last year, obviously due to the pandemic and not being able to have those different functions going on there. Other revenues increased 362,654 due to increased rental revenues, similar reasoning there. We also see an increase on the expenditure side, however, not near as substantial. Your expenditures increased 195,448, or about 1.7%. A few items there. You'll see a few items down. Your police expenditures decreased 277,916 due to some prior year capital outlay. The same could be said for street expenditures. They decreased 237,927 due to decreased street maintenance there, as far as timing of your street maintenance is concerned. On the increase, just like with revenues, your parks, aquatic center, and fairgrounds expenditures increased. Obviously, if you've got your services going there, it does cost as well to run those services. So you'll see increase to parks, 148,841, aquatic center, 35,470, and fairgrounds, 440,303. Transfers out of the general fund, there were some large transfers out of the general fund in 2020 for the city center project. That's why the transfers out decreased substantially in 2021. Your unassigned fund balance of the city, 2021 was 9,752,859. While not perfect science, oftentimes, we'll look at this unassigned fund balance to look at kind of a reserve in the general fund. So in doing so, comparing that to your total expenditures, your unassigned fund balance for the current year is about 81% of your expenditures are about 9.7 months, which is very healthy in regard to the fund balance of the general fund.
And my understanding is kind of the standard for that's about two months.
Yeah, GFOA, the Government Finance Office Association, best practice is two to three months unrestricted fund balance. Slightly different calculation than the unassigned fund balance, but really unassigned is going to be your unrestricted unless you have committed or assigned fund balance, which I don't think you all actually do typically. The main difference in unrestricted fund balance and unassigned fund balance, again, is commitments or assignments. Assignments typically we see if a city uses the, uses fund balance to balance their subsequent budget. So like if you said, we're going to, our revenues are not quite going to be, we're going to spend some money this year. We're going to balance the budget using fund balance, then that would be an assignment. So that's why oftentimes we use unassigned, because if you're planning to use that fund balance for the next year's budget, why would you include that in your reserve, so to speak? So that's why we always typically look at unassigned fund balance. But you are correct, two to three months is the GFOA best practice on fund balance.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Six and seven. I don't understand this graph. Oh, you haven't got that yet.
Page, on the, on the presentation?
Right.
No, ma'am, I'm not quite there yet.
Okay, I'm jumping the gun. Sorry.
Sorry, that's okay. But yeah, that is, that is correct. So very healthy in that regard.
We're tripled, four times the standard.
Yes, sir.
In reserves. Yep, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. So six and seven, as you were just asking about, Ms. Ledbetter, the, this is basically a graphical or chart depiction here of the general funds, revenues, and expenditures, and fund balance. So page six being the revenues and expenditures. Got three years here. So this is your last three calendar years. The blue, or I'm sorry, the green line is your revenues. The blue line is your expenditures. So you can kind of see there, as you would expect, your revenues from fiscal year 19 to 20 went down due to.
Well, does this not include the city center? Because it went down, it couldn't have.
No. The, this, this general fund is not where your city center will be reported.
Got you. Okay.
Now, in, what this also does not include, which is a very good, very good point related to that, is this, this is purely revenues and expenditures. This does not include, I'm getting deep in accounting here, but does not include other financing sources or other financing uses. Transfers out of this fund would be another financing use. And as I mentioned a moment ago, in 2020, there were substantial transfers out of the general fund that would have decreased the bottom line, but they wouldn't be in this chart here.
Okay.
That would be.
Thank you.
So you see there for 2021, you had 16,776,16 on revenues and 12,017,411 expenditures for the general fund. Looking at the next chart, this is a chart of the fund balance. You've got two categories we talked about here. You've got total fund balance, and then you've got unassigned fund balance. Let me look real quick, but I'm pretty sure the difference would be non-spendable fund balance for the city, if I recall. Yes, there's actually, there's a small amount of restricted fund balance in the general fund. There's some local maintenance improvement grant, the L-Med grants y'all probably familiar with. That, those monies that were received during 2021 but not yet expended on those projects are reported as restricted fund balance in the general fund.
Why is there the discrepancy between 2019 and 2021?
On fund balance?
Uh huh.
That relates to that transfer out for the city center in 2020 I was talking about there.
Okay, okay.
So you will see that your fund balance, which, as Mayor was mentioning a moment ago, reserve is still very strong in the general fund, even after transferring to support the city center in 2020.
Your reserve is?
Yeah, even after you're still.
What do we have in reserve?
That's what we just talked about a moment ago with your, was it seven months?
Not capital, not buildings. What do we have in reserve?
9.7.
Nine point, was it 9.7 or 7.9? Yeah, your unassigned fund balance of the general fund is 9,752,859. Your total fund balance of the general fund is 10,174,31.
Unassigned fund balance is your reserve.
We're having to keep that in, general fund.
All right. The next slide, we talk about the water and sewer fund. As you'll see there, operating revenues for the water and sewer fund increased 4,614,43, or about 16.1% for 2021. Largest part of that, the sewer plant reserves increased, led to a large increase in your water and sewer charges. Your TAP fees actually decreased 1,153,849 for 2021. On the expense side, your operating expenses increased 664,642, or about 2.8%. Personnel services decreased 1,285,878. Cost of sales and services increased 1,925,41, and your depreciation increased 857,979. As those projects, as you all know, a lot of water projects being placed into service as those projects go online, appreciation, of course, is going to increase.
Didn't we increase the water bill?
This year.
I don't think this year, not that.
That'd be 2022. So next year, I will likely be hearsaying that the operating revenues, or we hope, would increase related to the increased rate. Capital contributions, fiscal year 2021, 321,500. Fiscal year 20, 181,458. The unrestricted net position of the water and sewer fund, kind of like unassigned fund balance, except in this case, it's a different basis of accounting, but your unrestricted net position is kind of your residual equity in the water and sewer fund. Fiscal year 2021 was 13,6230. You'll note there, it did go down substantially from the prior year due to the same thing we talked about as far as general fund. There were some transfers out to assist with the city center project for 2021.
What is unrestricted net position?
Unrestricted net position is a category of net position or equity of the water fund. The water fund is an enterprise fund, so it's on the full accrual basis of accounting. So when you talk about fund balance of the general fund, net position is the same thing except for the water fund. It's the equity.
But we basically transferred that out to the city center.
Some of, yeah, a portion of that for 2021. All right, slide nine is the, is the water and sewer fund, operating revenues and expenses in a graphical or chart function here. You see for three years, operating revenues, you see a good trend there in that regard. Operating expenses, so your operating revenues, the green line, 33,217,534. Your operating expenses, 24,252,224. Gets you to an operating income of 8,965,310 for 2021 compared to 5,185,09 for 2020. All right, the next slide, talk about, there are other independent audits reporting here. It is our report on internal control compliance and other matters. In accordance with government auditing standards, we are required to not, not test your controls, but to review or not give an opinion on your controls, I should say, but to consider them in our audit to make sure there's nothing that would cause a, again, a material misstatement of financial statements. We do, we are big as a firm on processes. We feel like that's what you really get out of an audit. I'm not, wouldn't say any firm, but many firms can put the numbers on paper, but we feel like if we can come in here, walk through your procedures, talk through your processes, look at things, that's really what you get out of an audit. It helps you strengthen in those regards. So we did have a, one material weakness, five significant efficiencies we noted. There were no, no material non-compliance items noted. Most of the suggestions in this regard relate to, being the first one's actually one we see in pretty much all, especially cities of this size, but most all governments are related to segregation of duties. It's just not cost effective sometimes to have four or five people involved in the process. But at the end of the day, there's still a risk there. So that's what we're, that's what the first comment is in that regard. But those are listed in the report and also in that letter I mentioned earlier that I wasn't planning to go through in detail unless you all have specific questions on those, in those regard, those items.
Well, I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How are we going to rectify these problems? I understand how you could probably rectify the inventory at the water department. I understand how you can do that. But municipal court and zoning, how are you going to rectify that?
The, the good, the good news here is, so this is our second year doing your audit. First year, there were more, more of these than there are this year. So some of these were rectified during 2021. I should have said that to start with. There have been significant improvements in regard to a lot of departments and a lot of things. Matter of fact, we actually met, we came over and met with the chief and some folks from municipal court back, days get away from us, it's been a little while ago, to talk about some of those processes and ways to improve that. Jeff and Allison, we've talked a lot with them. We've actually talked about potentially assisting some as well in, you know, recommendation and how to, it's easy, it's easy to say this is what you should do. It's much, much more difficult to actually walk through and make sure the.
Well, you say that we kind of are lacking in personnel. That's why a lot of these problems happen. Do we need to hire people?
No, that's what I'm saying. You, what we're basically saying here, in some regard, like one of the findings is about segregation of duties. You don't, you don't want one person doing all the receipting, also taking a deposit at the bank, also writing checks. And I'm not saying that's necessarily what's going on with the city here. There's various departments where you can't hire, I always use a classic example of a recreation department concessions. You know, you can't have one or two people in there selling Snickers bars. You can't have four people watching over each other's shoulder selling Snickers bars. It's just not, nor do you want to spend two hours a night counting down how many Snicker bars, Snickers bars you have. So ultimately, your Snicker bars are going to walk away. That's just the way, that's the way it works. There's always risk there. And I'm not necessarily saying you're going to eliminate all the risks. This is just a suggestion that you'll, you know, there are risks there in that regard as far as segregation of duties in certain departments.
Well, when you come up 18 out of 25 problems, that's a lot.
It is. That's a small sample, but that, you know, we don't look at every transaction you have. So, you know, if you've got several hundred, we may look at 25 or 30 or 40. But we do extrapolate that out of the population, and we do usually say if you've got more than about 10%, we typically consider that to be something you might want to look at. So that's kind of how those numbers came about. But they, to answer your question fully, they, your staff are aware and working on trying to alleviate some of these, some of these items. So.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Slide 11 is just future reporting changes. I try to keep you all abreast of changes. I know last year I discussed this one with you. Been discussing this one for probably four or five years. This one would have already been implemented had there not been, had COVID not happened. A lot of things would have happened had COVID not happened, of course. But, and that's Gatsby's Statement Number 87, leases. This will probably be one of the most substantial effects as far as accounting standard changes on entities across the board in several years. Basically changes the way we account for leases. Mentioned Basically changes the way we account for leases. I've mentioned this before, but this is Gatsby's version of what's, of the change in leases. FASB, who issues standards for non-governmental entities, also issued guidance on leases. So leases are changing no matter what. No matter what type of entity, if it's a government, it's a nonprofit, it's a commercial entity, accounting for leases is changing, and that takes effect during 2022, the fiscal year we're in now.
I have a question. Would you explain to me the difference on page 11 of lease assets and operating leases?
Sure. So currently, leases are accounted for as either a capital lease or as an operating lease. So that's the way, prior to 2022, if you had a lease that you entered into, and it was, didn't meet four criteria, and I won't get into all the details about those criteria I mean, but if it meets the criteria of a capital lease, then in that case, you record an asset and you record a liability, a capital lease payable. And that capital lease payable is paid, you know, principal and interest over whatever term, and that asset is amortized or depreciated over a useful life. That's what, that's the current accounting for a capital lease. An operating lease currently oftentimes is like when you rent a building or rent a piece of equipment. In that case, there is no balance sheet effect. There's no asset, there's no liability. All in that case, you do is you record rent expense.
So that'll be the city center?
That's the operating lease.
Because it'll be, all of those will be operating leases.
Could be. Well, now, that's the current account that's going to change. That's the current accounting. That is, that is how we do things prior to Gatsby Statement Number 87, either operating lease or capital lease. The Gatsby 87 changes that. We no longer have a capital lease, we no longer have an operating lease. We now have a lease or not a lease. And the key there is to start with, the first step in this implementation is to determine, okay, is this agreement, does it meet the qualifications of a lease, the definition of a lease, lease, I should say. And I say this agreement, you've got to consider, remember, that it's understanding, contracts, agreements, what you may call lease, what you may call something else. Any agreement in that regard, you really need to, first step is to evaluate, does it meet the definition? That's the first step, that's the first thing that Gatsby 87 does, is defines what is a lease. Certain things don't.
What if it's not a lease?
If it's not a lease, then you'll account for it just, as you normally do, just an expense, basically, at that point. So you'd have rent expense, just like we're talking about.
And if it is a lease?
If it is a lease, that's where you get this asset we're talking about. It's actually an intangible right of use asset that goes on the books. Real similar to the way a capital lease was previously accounted for.
So will you have to go through every lease at the city center and determine if they're capital or operating?
Well, again, capital and operating goes away. You've got to go through and determine if it meets the definition of a lease or not.
Or just a lease.
But the good news is, I would say, just assuming here, and it was dangerous to assume, but my assumption is that most of those leases would be similar. In other words, if one doesn't meet the definition, not that you just disregard them all, but more than likely, they're going to be somewhat similar. I know the terms and all those sorts of things will be different, but more than likely, they're, you know, once you find out that one doesn't qualify, whatever's triggering that lack of qualification is probably going to be the case for all of them. Or if one triggers that it is a lease, then they all would.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But that's kind of how, if it does meet this definition, you've got an intangible right of use asset, you amortize it over a useful life, you've got a liability, a lease liability, you pay down principal and interest just based on the terms of the lease. That's really what's, really and truthfully, it's taking a capital lease, calling it something different, and it's going to be recorded just like, similar to a capital lease. And that's, that's the lessor and lessy, you know, two sides of that, just like that were previously. So in this case, with the city center, you're often, oftentimes going to be the lessor in those cases, which would mean you would have a lease receivable if it meets the definition, you'd have a lease receivable, and the asset would come off of your books in that regard. All right. Any questions on the numbers or any, as far as the numbers or 87 or anything else in that regard?
When you figure the worth of a city, you do take, you definitely take into account the buildings.
Yes, according what basis of accounting you're looking at, or really what you would consider to be worth of the city. If you're looking at net position, the equity of the city, yes, you would factor all buildings, assets in. I guess it's a matter of what you consider to be worth of the city, but you would, you would include all those items in.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else?
I've got one more quick letter I need to run through with you guys. It's the one that says significant audit matters. Three pager, significant audit matters is underlined. I will be very quick here. This is 95% boilerplate information, so I can be very, very quick. And it's probably the same information I told you last year, but I'm, these are required communications to you all charged with governance that I'm required to communicate. So I will be real quick, but by all means, stop me if you have a specific question. Required to let you know that Note 1, the financial statements, is where your significant accounting policies for the city are found. There were no new accounting policies implemented during 2021. You recall, last year, we had one new one. In 2022, you will have 87 that will be implemented, but in 2021, there were no new accounting standards that affected the city coming. Accounting estimates, you probably know, but all financial statements or most financial statements do have estimates in them. We're required to let you know, we feel like the most sensitive estimates are the life expectancy of your capital assets, how long they're depreciated, your allowance for doubtful accounts on your utility billing receivables, and then pension plan and OPEB plan actuarial assumptions would be probably the most sensitive estimates. As far as disclosures, I mentioned Note 1. There are probably 18 or 20 notes in this report, various different disclosures. Again, the most sensitive disclosure is likely your pension plan and OPEB plan disclosures, just simply because of the magnitude of those numbers. We do feel like the disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. As I led this presentation off, we did not have any difficulties in dealing with management performing this audit. I do assure you, had I had difficulties, you would have known about it long before me standing here before you tonight. We do have, from time to time, corrected, uncorrected misstatements, journal entries we post. We do provide a copy of those. Management does agree with those. They have signed off on, reviewed those, and those have all actually been posted to your general ledger as well. We also have, from time to time, uncorrected or past, we call them, adjustments. Those are items when we're doing something that might be immaterially or trivially different, we would, or maybe projection is different. We do keep a copy of those, though, and make sure that not only is one individual adjustment immaterial, but the entire, in the aggregate, they are all immaterial. We also provide a copy of those to management. Again, no disagreements with management. Had I had any, I promise you would know that long before now. Management representation is probably the most important thing in this letter, in my opinion. As you know, I mentioned earlier, we ask a lot of questions. We request a lot of information. However, we can only audit what we receive or what we're told. This letter, signed by management to us, does say that they have answered the questions to the best of their ability, provided information we've asked for to the best of their ability, and have not intentionally withheld anything that may change our opinion on the financial statements. We're not aware of any consultations with other independent accountants to obtain a second opinion, and no other, as far as other audit findings. I mentioned earlier, the letter, that is, that is it. And that concludes my presentation. Unless you all have specific questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate you all. And you all, let us know, again, we don't have to be a necessary evil year in. We're here to help throughout the year, so by all means, do reach out if we can help in any way.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
We can either accept the report and I can review it for another report in a couple weeks.
Do we have a motion to accept the audit report?
Make a motion to accept the audit report.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh. Item two, 2021 budget amendment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have to submit the balanced budget, and from time to time, we have to do an amendment, and that's what this is tonight. The hotel and motel fund, tax fund, final budget amendment for 2021 is presented for your adoption so that the city's in compliance with governmental accounting standards. Hotel and motel tax is accounted for in a special revenue fund, which is used to account for specific revenues such as hotel and motel tax revenues, which are legally restricted or committed to expenditures for specific restricted purposes. The amounts collected, it's 5% of the rent for every occupancy, is transferred to the Chamber of Commerce for the promotion of trade and tourism, and are governed by the agreement dated January 2000 with the Chamber under state law. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Phil?
We increased that, right?
What's that now?
We increased that tax, right?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? We have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2021 budget amendment is presented.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. Next, item B, planning and zoning conditional use permit 2022122.
Our twos in there.
New Generation Investment Group LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you open the public hearing in this item, I'd like to read the planning commission report, the end of the record that you have in front of you. The applicant has made application on behalf of the property owner and to the proper authorities for a conditional use permit to establish a used automobile dealership in addition to their existing aftermarket automotive customization shop. The back and south sides of their facility are enclosed and secured, which is where they will be locating their customized vehicles for sale. No for sale vehicles will be located at the front of their facility, which will be used for retail, customer parking, or visible from the public right of way. The planning commission held a public hearing on April 19th, 2022, and with no public comments, voted to recommend approval of the cup with the following two conditions. Number one, the vehicle inventory will remain in the back and south side fenced parking areas of the facility per the applicant's submitted plan. And number two, no advertising signage for vehicle sales. Will be visible from the right of way. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I know Adam Richmond is here also.
Any questions for Scott before we have the public hearing? A motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh. Is there anyone like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Adam Richmond. The property that we're talking about is the old movie theater. I think everyone knows that, but we are basically trying to supplement our current business. So we're a retail four-wheel drive shop. We plan on doing that forever. A big portion of what we do is we customize vehicles for car dealerships. And as some of you guys may be aware, new car dealerships don't have any cars right now. And so that's been very, very impactful to our dealership business. So our intention is to purchase vehicles from auctions, outfit them, which is what we do, we customize cars, and then sell them to our existing dealer network. So this is, in the state of Georgia, considered a car dealership. We have no intention of doing retail sales. And I can answer any questions you guys have.
Would you have any issues actually agreeing to limit it to that?
If I say it's a wholesale business, then I'm not allowed to keep them on the property based on the way that it's written. So I either have to have a conditional use permit for a car dealership or not.
But a limiting condition that there aren't any retail sales to the public, would that restrict you?
That would not allow me to sell, be a car dealer. The way it's written for the state of Georgia is you have to either have a car dealership license or a wholesale license.
Do you have the car dealership license still, Kevin, right? It's just the condition of the zoning would be a limiting factor of just the zoning.
I don't know how the zoning condition could impact, might affect his licensing mistake.
I don't want to do that. I just.
I'm not looking into that.
Well, would it matter if you had a car dealership? You can't see the cars. You're so far up there. Nobody can see them anywhere.
The car dealership is what, that's what allows you to be able to go to the auction purchasing and then sell the vehicles.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, you can't do that, right?
Correct. So the way it works right now is in the state of Georgia, in order to be a car dealer, you have to have like five things in place. You have to have a lease in place. You have to have a note or something from the city saying that you're allowed to operate this type of business at that location, which is why I'm here. And then you have to have the proper insurance, and there's a tremendous amount of hurdles that you have to have in place before you can even actually apply for the license. So we are literally doing all of this legwork so that we can apply for the license, which we plan to do as soon as this is done. This is our last step.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Is there anyone like to speak in opposition? A motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh. Discussion? Just want to offer an additional condition for consideration of the council. In addition to the conditions of the planning commission, number three, potentially you could say, this conditional use permit shall be limited and personal to this applicant and shall not transfer with ownership of the property to any other owner.
Why do you care?
Because it's limiting that the conditional use permit to these guys and their business model as opposed to Joe Schmo used car lot, buying their business for the used car lot.
Do you think that'd have any bearing on y'all's?
They would have to come back and ask for an additional conditional use permit, and we could decide whether their business model fits our vision, man.
You've got so many used car lots. What's one more?
Well, that's kind of the point. It's a little bit different than a typical used car lot, so that's why.
It's not. It's a storage lot, really.
I like, I like what you're doing.
Yeah, that's why I had a condition.
That's fine, Chris.
I agree with that.
Any other discussion? Another motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve with the additional condition as stated.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh. Moving on to utilities, report of quotes for two pickup trucks. One of the hardest things I do nowadays is truck. Truck, truck, trucks. Oh, my goodness. See if they put four-wheel drive on it for you. He might have a few here in a month or so. So we advertised on the state procurement website, and we put it out that we needed these two trucks, and we only got three responses. One was from Lake Mary, Florida. The bid was $69,500. What a bargain. That was a bargain. Yeah, and then we had two from Wade Ford for two different vehicles, different specs, you know, that we had put out there. One's for $36,636.68, and one for $35,844.60. These are already ordered. They're on the way to Wade Ford. We're just trying to lasso them before somebody else buys them. But these were two trucks that were budgeted, and so I've got Wade Ford to agree to two at the $35,844.60 to satisfy this budget request for 2022. Is that a piece or together? A piece.
A piece.
Yeah, yeah, a piece.
We'd like it that way.
If that's together, let's order a dozen. I was saying, what's the catch here? Are they? We'll just hold them, we'll put them in their storage lot till we need them down the road. We'll take 10. Oh, my goodness. So that's my request, is to buy two at $35,844.60. Any discussion? Another motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the two purchases of $35,841.60.
I see.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, John. Number two, report of quotes for sewer line rapid assessment tool. Yeah, this is a weird one. This is called a sewer rat, rapid assessment tool. And what it is, it's like a piece of sonar equipment that you take, and you take the lid off the manhole, and you sit it down in the manhole, and then you go upstream and check the sound that's going through the sewer line to see if it's clogged. And the reason this is important is because it speeds up our, you know, work process. We've got cameras, we've got things like that that take a lot of time to set up and run the camera through the whole line. run the camera through the whole line. Now we can go manhole to manhole and determine whether to get the camera out or not. Issue with this, this is the only company that makes it. We have a, a letter called a sole source letter from the company, that there's not another company that makes these. And so the amount of the quote from InfoSense Incorporated is twenty-eight thousand, two fifty-five. This is another budgeted item that we planned for this year, and we're requesting to be able to purchase this from InfoSense Incorporated.
Any questions? No motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the sewer rat.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh.
I just want to say that.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you. Now moving on to the police. Report of quotes for two police interceptor vehicles. I bet they're more than thirty-eight thousand dollars.
No, they're not.
I'll take it. I'll take that back.
Yeah, I'll take it, too.
We, we did the same thing, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We did the same thing as, as John did with his department. We sent a request for a bid proposal. We only got one back, though, and that was from Hardy Chevy as well, I'm sorry, Hardy Ford as well. So.
Wade Ford.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Wade Ford. So that was the state contract price, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. We called, I called several different other agencies and companies. Dodge is not accepting any orders for police package vehicles in any configuration this year, neither is Chevy. So they don't have cars to give. They're welcome to put us on a waiting list for twenty-twenty-three, but that, that certainly doesn't help us out this year. So Ford was the only bid that we received back, and they also will have those on the lot, he thought, in four to six weeks. So I, I felt that was a fair price. There were some police package vehicles sitting on lots, various lots over, all over the state, and I called and got individual price quotes for Dodge Chargers and Durangos and Tahos and things, and, and the rates were just exorbitant. I mean, they were fifty and sixty thousand dollars per vehicle, because there's just not any this year. So they were charging a lot more money. These two Ford interceptors came in at the state contract price, and they're available this summer. So that's my recommendation and my request to, to buy those two Fords at thirty-seven eight twenty-one and thirty-four cents.
That was in your budget, weren't they?
Yes, ma'am. This is, these are two budgeted items.
So then you got to come back on the outfitting.
Yes.
Do we come back on the outfitting as well?
Yeah, that, that was my fault. I should include the outfitting as well. So yes, sir, we will have to come back on the outfitting.
That's why I knew it wasn't cheaper. That's another twenty grand right there.
It probably won't be quite that much, but you're, you're correct.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the two interceptors at thirty-seven thousand, eight twenty-one, thirty-four.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh. Under announcements, National Day of Prayer is this Thursday at twelve o'clock at the amphitheater at the city center. And we have a special called meeting of the council next Tuesday at seven fifteen here at the council chambers. Any need for executive session?
What is that about?
It's for. City Center Finance.
What time?
Seven fifteen P.M. Any need for executive session?
Is that the tent?
Yes.
A motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh.